Let's start with the pledge.
... of the United States of America, a tender republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the work session of Monday, February 12, 2024, 9:30 a.m. I will ask the Secretary Treasurer to call the roll.
Trustee President.
I am here.
Ed Warner Jr., President. Richard T. Marin Jr.
Here.
Joseph R. McLaughlin.
Here.
Matt Parsons.
Here.
We're all here.
Thank you, thank you. We have some discussions on here. First one with trustees Marin and Warner for Somax Me Cox Monitoring Project. We have Mr.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tom. Is a sign up sheet there, signing sheet there?
Oh. Good morning, everyone, and thanks to trustee Marin and trustee Warner for inviting me to come and speak this morning. Thank you. So I wanted to give an update on the Me Cox Bay Environmental Observatories that we run as in cooperation with the trustees. Just a little history, we installed a weather station at Scott Cameron Beach in October of 2019. Started with that and a level station also in 2019, October, at Flying Point Road. We then upgraded, added salinity in July 2020, a salinity and water temperature sensor at Flying Point Road and a second salinity and temperature sensor at Crescent Avenue in August of 2020. Then the big system is our mid bay station, which was initially deployed in August of 2020. It gives multiple water quality parameters, temperature, salinity, oxygen, pH, chlorophyll, turbidity, and we deploy that from mid March to mid December. We have to remove it every winter because ice would otherwise tear it up. So it's back getting its yearly spa treatment before we redeploy it. We're expecting to redeploy it in March. So real time data from all of this equipment is live on the web at www.lishore.org/mecox. Right now, it's just weather and the salinity station at Flying Point Road, but it's up there right now, and this is actually a printout from, I think, yesterday. Now, these systems take data continuously every 15 minutes or so, once an hour for level, and we found that this is really essential to effective management. So this graph, don't worry, this is the only graph in the presentation, just shows you salinity at Flying Point Road just for the first 10 days of this year, and you can see it goes way up and way down depending on rain events and depending on the opening of the cut and saltwater coming in. And you can see that even at this one location, over a day, it can change one or two parts per thousand, and it can change as much as five parts per thousand in 48 hours. The other thing that we're finding, because we have multiple salinity measurements, is that when water comes in, when saltwater comes in from the ocean or a big rain event comes down from the tributaries, what we're finding is it doesn't just mix because Me Cox is very, very large in relationship to its depth. So think of it as a dinner plate with a half, quarter inch of water in. So blobs of water come in and they circulate around, and you can actually see them go from, you can see a blob of salty water, a blob of fresh water, go by one station, then a few hours later it goes by another station. And it may take days to even a week or more for all of this to mix together, depending on how much wind and mixing there is. And this is really critically important because if you just send somebody down there to take a bottle sample, they could miss it. It could be a high point in the day, it could be a low point in the day. So having a continuous, relatively continuous measurements is essential to really see what's going on in the bay. So a collaboration between Somas and the trustees for the operation of the observatories was actually cited by the DEC when they granted the dredging permit to open and maintain the Me Cox Cut. Prior to this long term permit, the trustees, whenever the cut needed to be opened, had to have an emergency authorization, took a lot of effort, and now they have, now we have the ability to look at the data from the observatories and use that to inform decisions to manage the bay by opening the cut. Now, there have been successes, but there have also been challenges. So here's our Flying Point Road station. We have a second level sensor there. The reason the first level sensor was destroyed by vandals in, you know, a couple of years ago, and it's just unfortunate that there are people who don't have better things to do with their time than to literally kick the sensor until they break it off and fell in the bay, and unfortunately, it's not designed to be completely submerged. We're actually upgrading this level sensor this spring to get better data. This was really ugly. The floating platform was run over by a boat at high speed in August 2022. We repaired it and returned it to service. I have to say that the workboat, the marine maintenance people have been really helpful going out there and helping us with this. You can see the mast with the solar panels was broken off. It was actually at the bottom of the bay, connected by a wire, so we were able to pull it back up. And I thought to myself, what if the light, because there's a light on top, three quarter mile light, and I said, oh, maybe the light broke. I brought the thing back, and after being underwater for three days, I walked inside with it and it started to flash. So it was not the light, it was not the light, it was just somebody wasn't paying attention to what they were doing. But the biggest problem, you know, these are technical issues, and I've been in this business a long time and I can handle this stuff, I can budget for it, but the biggest problem unfortunately, and I was asked to talk about this, is financial issues. The average wait we have for payment over the last two years has been 201 days after we submit the invoice. Currently, we have $49,192 and change in invoices outstanding with an average age of 325 days. One open invoice is 733 days old. It was delivered timely, and in fact, another invoice delivered the same day was paid a few months later, but apparently this one got misplaced by the time it was relocated. CPF had expended all funds for that fiscal year, so it's sort of sitting in limbo. So the problem is that, you know, we can do the technical stuff, the joke, our unofficial motto at my laboratory is we can do anything except work for free. So slow payment is presently limiting our ability to maintain the observatory, including we've got to prepare the floating platform for deployment, literally next month. We have a malfunctioning salinity sensor at Crescent Avenue, we want to get that back in, but that's a couple thousand dollars at the manufacturer to repair. We want to upgrade the level sensor at Flying Point Road, that's another thousand. So we're requesting that the trustees arrange payment of the outstanding invoices by the end of February and then work to optimize the system so that we can, so we can have some confidence of getting payment of future invoices within 60 days of presentation. The collaboration between Somas and the trustees is valuable to both parties, and we really hope to continue it for many years to come. So your assistance in improving the timeliness of payments would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your consideration and your assistance on this. So questions?
Well, Tom, I want to thank you very much for your presentation. I want to thank you for bringing light of issues that, you know, we can, I believe as a board, we can resolve working with the CPF people. I know there was a turnover in their, you know, group there, so there were some issues, I guess, townwide as far as getting paid, which we are working on. I believe there's going to be a check written for some part of that outstanding balance at our next meeting this afternoon. But I just want to make light of how critical this monitoring is moving forward. Me Cox is a unique body of water, it's probably one of the only bodies of water that is like this on the East Coast. I mean, it has, we have Georgica and SAG, which just have finfish, but we actually have shellfish in here, oysters, clams, multiple species of crabs and fish in there, some of migratory fish that come in in the springtime, so keeping it open, keeping the salinity proper, and doing all that you do with this program is really critical to the environment for Me Cox to continue to flourish. I mean, and with that said, all this water quality monitoring and all the information you're going to give us, the next round, when we go for the CPF 20 to get some more grants to enlarge this program, it's critical that we have this information and we can put it into talking points when we ask for more money, and hopefully we'll receive it. So I want to thank you for your hard work, and I'm going to speak for myself and probably the whole board that we're going to resolve this funding problem and move forward in a good fashion.
On that subject, before we move away, because I think that there's a little confusion here for the public, I think it needs to be cleared up. Why don't you explain the procedure of who's actually responsible for it? That way, because I don't think people fully understand that this is a community preservation fund.
The college and the trustees came together and we came up with this plan to monitor the water in Me Cox Bay, because the salinity is critical to shellfish and some finfish in there, and we've had multiple lawsuits along the beach saying that we improperly managed the pond. We came up with a pond management plan, which, you know, had some issues, and I think it's a really good plan. But as far as the money goes, when we talk to you and we come up with this plan, we go to the CPF 20, the committee, we do a proposal to get money for this monitoring. It has to have certain technical stuff in it. Without that, the money isn't going to be forthcoming. Once we acquire, once the money is acquired and set aside for Me Cox, then we do the projects with the Somas, and then the next step is CPF 20, they write the check. We don't write the check, the comptroller doesn't write the check. I believe it directly comes from their fund, the comptroller oversees it. So there's multiple layers of government, and I've been involved in government 18 years. Government is difficult to deal with as far as funding and projects and stuff like this. And that's why when you said there was a problem, myself and trustee Marin and our environmental analyst, James Doria, and one of our staff has met with you, with your partner Lucas there, discussed what's going on, and now we have a good conduit of communication. So I think it's really imperative that we get these bills paid in a timely fashion. That way, with the next entity, whether it's Cornell or someone else, or some other entity wants to do a project, they realize that when they do these projects, that they're going to get paid in a timely fashion. I mean, I run my own business. If I didn't get paid for 325 days, I wouldn't be in business. So I can relate to what you're going through, and conversation has been had, and I think we're pushing forward in a quick fashion to get you paid.
And I just want to say, I absolutely agree with you. The trustees have been very cooperative, have been very helpful. I just, you know, but I think that we do need to, and I understand that there are several layers of government involved. I just think that it's becoming a, I'm, of course, in a government, Stony Brook University being a state agency, so I understand entirely, but I think it's just reaching the point where we've got, and I appreciate your willingness to help, to help resolve this, so I'm glad that we're moving forward, and we're looking forward to moving forward together on it.
All right. I really appreciate this data, and I think it's imperative. As Ed said, this is a very unique situation on the East Coast. It was the most productive bay on the whole of the East Coast in the 50s. We have an opportunity here to have a closed system that can really answer a lot of questions for other embayments in the town. One really important thing that we spoke of the last meeting, when we have extreme rainfall events in October, okay, I think there's some data that we really need, and we did mention this, and I just want to put it for public form, we need a dissolved oxygen meter that's both bentic and surface, close to the flat that is off Cobb Isle, in between Burnett's Creek and Mill Creek. I don't have a pointer, but I think Ed and I can dial that in for you. What happens in the fall is the bay is extremely hot, and now with temperatures kicking down the road, the dissolved oxygen gets very dicey, and this is when we lose most of our steamer sets on the north side of the bay. So we need some kind of understanding of what's going on, surface and bentic during that time period in October. If we can't get one on the station up and going off Cobb Isle, if we could do it in the unit that's in the middle of the bay, I think it would answer some questions, but ideally, I think that flat that's in between Burnett's Creek and Mill Creek is really important. I also want to note, you know, like, once we acquire a lot of data with these monitors, you know, and we have like historical, like five years of data with understanding when the inlet's closed and open, there's really no reason to have continued monitoring. I'd like to see these same resources utilized in another application. It could be in Me Cox to tell us more stories about Hay Ground Creek or Mill Creek, it could be used in Hetty Creek. So once we get a timeline, I think, you know, time lapse, understanding of what's going on, I think we can utilize that data, continue to open the cut and manage it, but I also think we should utilize these resources in other embayments. I really would like to see the link on the Southampton trustee website, or I think that there's a lot of people in the community that would like to see this data, because, you know, Me Cox is dear to a lot of people, so. And I spoke with trustee Welker, she is still working on the 14K that is, what are we, 2021? Yeah. I am going to do my best to rectify these situations. I just ask, I know there's also, takes two to tango, we need invoices as soon as possible because you understand how long it takes us to process them. Until we streamline the system with the Southampton Town, we need as much, you know, as much time as possible so you can get paid in a timely manner, and I'll try and speed it up, believe me.
We do, we will be probably sending invoices every two months. I mean, we could send them monthly if that helps, but.
That's better.
Okay. To speak to some of your other points, you know, we actually have been thinking about deep oxygen. We have a couple of ideas, one that's relatively inexpensive. Again, once we get the financial things resolved, we could certainly talk about adding a dropped oxygen sensor off the existing floating platform. The platform could be moved to a new location for, you know, could be moved to a new location at your critical time of the year. We could place it right where you're talking about and get surface and deep oxygen. All things are possible. We just need to talk, we continue to discuss what you all feel your needs are, and we'll look at what the technical and financial requirements for those things are, and we're perfectly happy to work with you and optimize. I think that even after a few years, there's still enough, I think there's still enough episodic events where we may move some of these monitoring resources to other places in the bay or even other embayments that trustees control. We probably should always have some observatory capability in the bay, because if that once in 20 years event comes down and you don't see it, then bad things could happen, you could have problems.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to mention is the mixing of water. You know, when the salinity is very low in there, eight, nine parts, and then you get a storm event, and you get this tremendous overwash, it takes days for that water to mix and, you know, become one. So having that surface monitor and a bentic monitor in the middle part of the bay is going to give you an idea of the timeframe between the event and when the salinity all becomes mixed as one. And I think that's really critical, because there's a lot of different fish in there, and there's shellfish in, and when these events happen in the springtime when the water warms up, is it going to cause, is it going to spawn of oysters and clams? So I'd like to know a little bit more about the shellfish that are in there.
Right.
And what happens to them when these mixing events happen? And normally, the mixing events only really happen very quickly if you get a wind event, and without a wind event, because this winter's been a very calm winter, so any of these saltwater blobs that get in there probably take a week or two weeks to, you know, dissipate and to mix, and I'd like to see how long that takes.
For that, we need the Crescent Avenue Salinity Station back, because then we'll have two points and we can actually watch these things move around. It's a lot easier to do those kinds of characterizations. But once we get Crescent Avenue back, and of course, in a month, we'll have the floating platform and we'll have three different locations. But you're right, we have some, I think that the stratification is probably more horizontal than vertical, but I could be wrong, and perhaps with additional information, we'll be able to look at some of those things.
Let's circle back to the business end of this deal for a minute, just to clear up anything that's not clear. The trustees have been struggling to get their budget squared away for hundreds of years. Quite frankly, you know, the last decades trying to become their own district, which was approved by the governor and then delayed by the prior administration, trustees sought to get things on solid ground. There's an example after example after example where there's breaches to a trust, which affects the beneficiaries in the environment where there should not be. I do know that past trustee, now county legislator Welker, did work diligently to try and resolve these issues.
Indeed.
I think that the reality is that it is a very, very excellent thing that you can utilize the community preservation fund monies, which is a substantial fund for these types of projects. Trustee Warner had alluded to the management plan, and as you were talking about, the achievement of a permit, so that we don't have to operate on an emergency basis, looking backwards, but on a proactive basis to better balance out the environment and keep everything in harmony as best we can. You know, that being said, on the financial end of the deal, we've tried and tried to resolve that. When you have funds that are spent at the pleasure of a different board with a different procedure, the best we can do is try and collaborate, and I think there was a tremendous amount of collaboration. Now, there's a lot of excuses and reasons why there are delays, there were staffing issues and other technical difficulties that everybody needs to work through. We have new administration there, we have perhaps some new parameters and new procedures that are coming in. And it's disappointing to me that people don't get paid, because it's not something that we can put on as a resolution and pass, as you're going to see us do today with a warrant, because we pay the comptroller for services for these things, and everybody's got to work together, okay? What else is disappointing to me is that people are vandalizing our important equipment that's utilized for helping maintain public health and safety in the environment, and that's very disappointing to me as well, all right? You know, the trustee board, you know, we're bubble gum and duct taping things together, we're a working board. We have peoples that are sitting here today that also are serving as staff for the people of the town. And when you talk about, you know, not working for free, you know, these people are working for pennies an hour when you take a look at the amount of time that's put into the mission. So I think that, you know, I don't want to beat this board up, because a board is trying to work with everybody within the confines of what they can do. Some is outside of their control, outside of this board's control, and I just think it's a message that needs to be discussed with everybody in the building, so that we all work together, so that it all works, all right?
Couldn't agree more.
Okay, so that's what we're going to strive to do. This is all great, you know, believe, I have a degree in the environmental studies, I get it, but I also understand it's the business part of the deal that's got to make it all go, and that's what we're trying to do here, all right? So I think we got a good start, and hopefully.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
James, you want this stuff?
I did. No.
All right. I think we're going to segue right into the next discussion, because I think it leads right into that, right?
That's ironic, isn't it?
That's, a design, contracts, procedure. So we talked about this, right?
Yeah.
To try and help out the people, get the payments by making some extra steps.
Ed is the secretary, but I'm kind of playing backup on this one, so I'll start, Ed can fill in, and then I'm sure Scott will have a closing. Contracts and procedure, okay, I'm new to the game. I know the government's got a lot of red tape, but basically, at the moment, it's a glorified game of hot potato. I know that there's been a lot of change. CPF has just developed a water quality program, okay? So Jackie is doing a stellar job in cleaning up and making an understanding, her and I working hand in hand to try and really get a procedure in place, because right now, it's just been kind of like, you know, like, we're doing our best, they're doing their best, the town, I still, I have not yet had a meeting with the town yet, so, yeah, that is definitely I really need an understanding of what our attorney's job is for the trustees, for these procedurals to take place, because we have, you know, sometimes we have to draft a resolution. It was my understanding that Mark was going to help draft resolutions for the town trustees, but there's a misunderstanding of who's actually supposed to do a resolution, and I want to really clear that up. We have, I mean, just case in point, last meeting, there was an emergency dune restoration project, because a woman's house was, had, the ocean was coming under her house. It was under my assumption that Mark was going to draft a resolution, that we could have an emergency dune project, and then all of a sudden, outside counsel, of which we pay for, and my secretary are scrambling, because Mark had something to do for Southampton Town the next day, and so I just need very clear understanding. Also, how long a process it takes for, when it gets to the town, I need to know, you know, we need to know, like, where the log jams are, because it ends up sitting on somebody's desk for a period of time, and we got to clean that up. There needs to be some clarification, and I'm not throwing stones at anybody, Mark included, because I think there's just a misunderstanding. Now, this is kind of like, we got partial town, we got partial CPF, we got partial trustees. There needs to be clear cut, known, this is how we go about getting a project, as wonderful as the one in Me Cox is, through, so that people can get paid in a timely manner. I mean, as a contractor, you want to get, you have to get paid, it's part of the operation. There's a few instances, and this is kind of my last point, or second to last point. First off, as the trustee board, we need to cool our jets, as far as all these projects. There's a lot of projects going on, we have to actually, like, reel it in for a small period of time before we take on new projects, get our bills cleaned up, okay? Methodically, the trustees need an actual procedure for four new projects before we take on any new projects, and I really, the last and foremost is, and there was a lot thrown at me at a very short period of time with the staff. There are some parts of the procedural process whereby we can't see if the check has been paid, okay? We'll think that somebody was paid three weeks ago and they get a phone call, and the town has kind of like said, well, that, we don't want to be, tell you. And, and the town has kind of like said, well, that, we don't want to be, tell you when it's paid or we don't want you to have access to, to our files. We need that information to know whether somebody has been paid. Do we have a meeting possibly scheduled for Tuesday with the comptroller and Mark? Stuff's got to get like sorted out so we can be semi-professional here and not a ragtag group. And honestly, for the limited staff that we have, we're pretty good. Um, I just need some understanding of where everything gets a little bit slowed down. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I had suggested a, a meeting with Councilman Pell and Jessica on a couple of things you, you talked about, trustee Maron, because you, you have a misconception about a couple of things that I could clear up probably better done in exact. But I can say for the town, my duty is to review resos and contracts and I'll draft them. We have a contracts technician upstairs who does that. I can't unfortunately get in any deeper than that without a discussion that involves confidential legal and personnel. But that's why I think we could benefit substantially from an exact session. Because essentially, everything you just said is incorrect and I could clear that up. But I can't do it here.
I, I could touch on this real quick. Historically, our board pays, would pay the bills from our accounts. The dredging in Me Cox, the dredging in SAG, we would write the check directly to the vendor. If we were doing a project with SOMAS, we would write the check directly from our accounts. So in our office, I talked to Lisa, I talked to Jessica, I talked to James. Uh, there's a bill outstanding, a resolution will be drafted and to pay it. When we started, when we got involved with CPF 20, I believe it was in 2018, you know, it was a, it's a, it's a wonderful program, it's a great idea. There's a lot of funding there, but you're also dealing with another entity. And, uh, when, when it was first created, it was a small little group of people. It grew so fast and so quickly that they, and so many, and so much turnover that they didn't have the staffing, they didn't have the capability, they didn't have the, you know, the clerks and the secretaries to monitor all the projects that we got involved in and every other entity, you know, because you're looking at CPF 20, we're, we're just touching on the projects that the trustees have done. The whole town does these projects with CPF 20 and, and their staff. And I could tell you right now from being in our office and, and seeing the staff overwhelmed and looking at this glazed look that when you walk into the office, we're doing too much. Like, like Chip said, you know, all these projects are great, but constituents come to us, you want to do this project in Mill Pond, you want to do this project in Me Cox, this one in, in SAG, the college comes to us for this project in Western Schinacock. Yeah, we want to do them, we want to do them because it's great for the environment. But when you start doing these projects and you don't have, you have a large turnover of staffing, which I can attest to in my office, I believe there are five staff members that left in August and September in my office. Out of seven or eight staffers, it, it's a problem. And, and stuff falls through the cracks and, you know, having, you know, a gentleman like Tom come here and reiterate that it's important that they get paid because we get audited, the CPF gets audited, they, uh, the, the SOMAS gets audited. And without this money being there, it's going to be a problem. So do we want to, do we want to have a functional, a non-functional broken system and do lots of projects or have a functional system that works very well and do less projects? And that, that's something that our board's going to wrangle with.
All right, let's, let's back up for a second here. Excuse me, excuse me. Back up for a second here. So in my tenure here, which is over 10 years, when I first got here, the board wrestled with a lawsuit that sought to defund the trustees. Defund the trustees, take the financial abilities away from the trustees of controlling the trust monies, the trust revenues, okay? The things that we would write checks out of our account, right? Am I correct?
Yep.
All right. So we got into a battle with the lawyers and we first lost the battle, right? And then it was appealed and we overwhelmingly run, won that battle. In the interim, we decided as a board at the time that to avoid that forever being able to happen, a challenge to the board, saying somebody did something wrong, we employed a comptroller, the town comptroller. They basically wanted to say that the town board had to control the trust monies. Well, that doesn't make sense because there's a system of checks and balances and five independently elected officials that are to oversee that fund in the best interest of the freeholders and commonality of the town and the environment. Because let's face it, the waterfront gets bought up by folks that aren't not always so friendly to the public. We have lawsuits that are involving that as well, where we try and, and mediate that. So that being said, we hire a comptroller to make sure every I is dotted and every T is crossed and proper procurement procedure is followed and there's efficient payment of bills and protection of public monies and resources that's overseen by this member. So that's what we did, we pay for those services. So the board tried, we paid the town for that. And as Secretary Treasurer Warner pointed out, you know, there's problems with, with staffing and turnover from staffing because it's no secret that sometimes you're, you're spending hours of your day in traffic getting to town hall and back. And, you know, people have to kind of weigh out their quality of life and where they're going to work. And, and, and they get better opportunities that, that add, you know, more value to their day and their lives. So there, there's turnover, which is like, now the trustees are in half the base to try and alleviate some of that from what we do. Uh, so that being said, in all this period of time, contractually and everything else, the trustees were supposed to be on their own district so that there is a clear understanding of who pays for what, what's trust revenue, what are town obligations to the trust, so on and so forth. The governor signed that law unanimously, unanimously passed the New York State Assembly and the Senate and was signed by the governor in the interest of transparency and financial stability to the people of the town of Southampton for the benefit of the freeholders and commonality. The prior administration delayed implementation of that, which created more chaos, more confusion, okay? And now, here we are, working through the problem to get the oldest elected board that there is in the country with colonial era patents dating back to King James II for the protection of the public's benefit here in the town of Southampton. That's what we're trying to do right now. So it is a big conversation. It really, by law, has to happen this year. These things need to be resolved this year because the amount of money that's supposed to be part of the general fund, that is for the purposes of the trustees, is supposed to be on the tax bill for the January 2025. Am I correct in that? I am correct in that. That way you could see what a small piece of the pie actually goes for what is so important to the quality of everybody's life in this township. And I've been working for 10 years on this, trying to get this done. And we're going to get it done, right? Trustee Maron?
Yes, sir.
We're going to get it done. So for the public's information, this is a big conversation. It's a big issue and it's right on the cusp of being resolved. It's very complex, but it's very simple at the same time if you just simply understand that this is a land trust for your benefit. And the responsibility of these trustees is to secure the assets of that trust. And that is inclusive of having loyal legal counsel to the trust, okay? I think we can leave it there. I think we can leave it there. If anybody has questions, this is one of the closest boards that there is to the people of the town. And anybody can call me at any time and I'd be more than happy to explain it to them, okay? So that being said, I think we can move on from our discussions if that's okay with the rest of the board members.
Great.
And we could move on to the general permit applications for determination and the application reviews, all right? I'm going to lead off. I have 14 Schinacock Road, I have land use representing it. And Baron Wyman.
Morning Chuck.
DeBoer. How are you, sir? Will help me get through this. Thank you, you know, very much. Yeah, thanks, sure.
This is a pretty simple application. It's a replacement of an existing bulkhead on Temple Creek. Uh, it's 252 feet of bulkhead, 152 foot return on the north end and an additional five foot return on the south. 10 foot buffer behind it, non-fertilization buffer. There is a three foot wide timber walkway proposed on the landward side. The bulkhead is, kind of comes in and out. The, it's either going to be in place or actually a little bit landward when it gets reconstructed. And that's pretty much it.
James, we had some notes on this, right?
Yes.
What are our notes?
Just got to specify the buffer on the, on the cover sheet.
Pick one.
Yeah, you have a walkway deck, we saw the sand or planted with beach grass. So it just needs to be designated on what you're putting there on both the plant and the cover sheet.
Your combination on planting or cover sheet. Okay. There's some other ones, right, James?
Yeah, I believe the... Are you changing the height of the bulkhead or?
No.
Same. If you could put that in there as well.
Anybody?
Yeah, we'll make those changes and get them into change.
Yeah, if you could do that, that way maybe design it and that way when, you know, this way we know it's going. They're all acceptable, blue book complacency, but we need to hone down this section is going to be this. Made a vegetation.
No problem.
All right, so you've got to get an updated plan and cover sheet over. I know we can just keep watching for it.
Take care tomorrow, I'll get it back to James, not, not a problem.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hang on to that until you.
Yes.
And then he'll tell me that we've got the stuff and then we can go to the next phase.
Yes.
All right?
Yep. Thank you, Scott. See you guys.
Okay.
And thanks for all your hard work and all this other stuff.
It's our pleasure. All right, the next one, Wilmington Savings Fund Society, 12 Marlin, builder of the Hamptons. Somebody representing this application, there's a lot of questions on this one here. Nobody's representing this application. James, we needed some more information, didn't we?
Yes. This is Salvatore Bilden, or Salvatore Bonda?
Yeah, but the applicant or the agent is supposed to be, were they, we contacted them and tell them to come in?
Yeah, they, they received the email.
Let's hold it then.
Yeah, we got to hold it. Madeline EQ2 LLC, 2 Squires Avenue, East Quogue. I see Billy Mack's here from First Coastal.
How are you?
Good.
How's everyone's doing? Good morning, Billy Mack, First Coastal. Like to hear about your budget problem, sounds like my own at home.
Well.
But I'm glad you guys are on it.
Well, if we're, if we're passing, you know, if we're writing the checks saying, here's one thing, but there's all these other things that are attached to this.
No, I get it and you guys do amazing work, so keep it up, thank you. This is an application to repair an existing permitted revetment on 2 Squires Road in East Quogue. And also correct a part of the structure that was built not on their property. It crossed over the property line ever so little. You can see that one part that James is highlighting. But it's essentially to do a, you know, I'll, I'll call it minor repair, but there will be machinery to reset some of the boulders that have dislodged and been overtopped in the recent storms that we've had. And also. Uh, that was done right after Sandy.
That the, when they bumped over into the neighbor's property with Sandy?
Yeah, it was all done at the same time.
Did that panic, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I guess it just wasn't surveyed properly or something. There's also a tremendous amount of invasive species plants, knotweed and others that are growing on the beach, so our, our plan is to remove those as well and replant with native.
Is that in your plan?
It, it's highlighted right in that site.
Is it in your cover sheet?
It's, it's got to be adjusted.
Good, okay. This is the first stab at this and for you guys.
That's why we hope you come in and boil it down.
Take a look. Be happy to do that.
Of course.
Give a plan on what you're planning, you know, conjunction, getting rid of them.
Um, our plan is, I think it's highlighted on the plan, but it's to remove it and replant with beach grass.
Stair gets beat up pretty good, doesn't it?
It does, yeah.
Billy, is this the old Caffrey House?
Yes, I think this is, it had other names related to it, but yes.
Um, are the remnants of the old dock still out there?
I think the old dock is, is holding on for dear life.
It's, no, it's like.
Well, I, I don't know, I don't, I'm. It's there.
We can take a look at it, Edward.
The owners are.
I know that was a question about some of the people that were jet skiing along there last summer. It was like, it's in terrible, was in terrible disrepair.
Yeah, there was one storm that ripped it apart. I think the owners have kept it in repair.
Okay. Just making sure because I know, uh, three or four years ago, it was in really, really bad shape. And some of the people jet skiing along there had questions about whether removal of it or not.
Right.
It shouldn't be going too fast that close to the shore either.
Oh, I know that.
And there should be a light at the end of the dock too. So I'll mention that to the owners.
Yeah, that's a really long dock, something that we've never, we're in now.
Yeah, historically, that one's been there for a while and I know it's gone over, uh, you know, gone through some repair cycles.
Okay.
So we're happy to meet on site or we can update the plans with respect to the native species that we're replacing with the invasive species.
That whole, that whole stretch has a lot of different rock and.
Yeah.
Are you going to be replacing, replacing the walkway down to the beach?
Probably, uh, there's a, well, I think we'll leave that open for access.
No, I was just curious because I see it on here and I know it was, it was there in some form or another.
He's just got stairs, he just wants to rebuild the stairs according to this.
Yeah, exactly.
The rock revetment, rebuilding the stairs and planting with beach grass.
These goes here.
Right. But I'm just saying, this is his cover sheet.
Oh, I don't have the cover sheet, that's why.
Right here.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it's, I don't think we're doing anything with the dock. It's kind of hanging in there, it seems fine right now, but.
Like I said, four or five years ago, it was in pretty, pretty bad disrepair.
Yeah, the sand's not going to last there. I mean, you just get these storms and these super high tides we've been having and the surges, it gets beat up.
It's, it's a lot of energy on that shoreline, yeah.
So, um, do they intend to bring any fill in there?
Just 100 cubic yards.
Yeah, it's a shame we couldn't coordinate it with the dredging of, uh.
Carter?
No, the next one over.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 Romano, well.
Oh, that'd be great.
Well, you could perhaps, you, you know what? That would have to be a conversation you would have with those folk because they are always looking for a place to.
Get rid of the sand that used to be on your beach.
Yep.
But it's not, I think the problem is that, I don't know what the percentage of is because.
Got to look at the clutter samples?
Yeah, because I think other, other folks were offered it too and they didn't want it because they didn't want it, the darkness, whatever. But I mean, in that area over the top of rocks and whatnot, it'll wash right out.
I'm talking about the interface and when, at the mouth of it, because that's clean sand. When you get inside, it's all organics.
Right.
Yeah, be happy to take the clean sand.
I don't know who, who has that, do you have that permit?
No, we have, we have the permit and the.
Maybe we should, you should file for it and see the parameters of what, you know, can be done with that material and what, what it's made of.
Sure.
I think the person that was.
We're in the process of renewing that one.
Right, and I think there's going to be a new person that's spearheading it too because I think that the prior contact folks, I think.
What are you planning on doing, the, the actual work?
Yeah, and I do know that the DEC would be in favor, would be favorable to keeping it in the system.
Locating the system.
And this isn't, this is going to be in the system. So this, it could be a good place for you to, you know, for two projects to get done at one time.
We could reach out, we could reach out because I got a call from the guy who was coordinating it prior. But I believe he's going to be relocating.
Okay.
So he may be able to give us the new contact person. So he may be able to give us the new contact person and then we can perhaps have a conversation because that could work both ways.
Totally.
Because, you know, even, you know, that, we did it with Carter.
Yeah.
We did part of it from Carter Creek and we covered up a bunch of the rock revetment stuff there.
That didn't under-respect.
Makes sense. Put some sand back in the supply there, yeah.
That's what we did there and it worked out quite well because if the area gets lately pretty blasted, I mean, we're going to get some pretty heavy winds coming in here tomorrow, right?
Yep.
Yeah, north winds.
Sunday tomorrow.
So we'll update the plan to include that information and if anybody wants to meet on site, we'd love to do that, just to get familiar with it.
Pop it on hold.
Okay. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Trying to get you that phone number, trying to connect you, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that may work good.
Thanks.
All right.
InterScience, 24 Carpon Road, South Hampton. Recio property.
Hello, sir.
How's it going? Ed, you may remember, we got dock permits for this property prior. It was a little bit of a charade. So project's pretty far along at DEC. DEC told us four feet wide. So the old walkway was five feet wide, the new walkway's going to be four foot wide, and we hired Steve Lemansky to draw up the engineered plans. Be through flow decking. Board needs to be aware there's a 50-foot wide buffer behind the bulkhead, so it's got beach grass planted. And it was just planted and just approved for a certificate of wetlands compliance by Mauricio. And that's all I can think to tell you.
See that?
It's consistent with what is on the neighbor to the north. The wetlands, yeah, well, that's a, the jet ski float, yeah.
Is that permitted?
Can you add the buffer language to the cover sheet?
Is it permitted?
I don't know.
We have to check that out.
Yeah, is it on prior, anything?
Well, it's a separate permit.
The jet ski float is, and lift are separate permits from the dock.
You have permits for those things?
Yes. The permits are in place for the dock.
How about the jet ski?
Yeah.
I thought we had gotten, because it was shallow there and they needed some issue.
They put the boat out and moored it.
Yes.
Just check, you can check, James.
And I can also check, depends on the person that got the permits. So all that's fine. We'll be coming back to you with engineered.
Yep, no elevation change, it's all going to be consistent along there.
No, it's going to be exactly the same, same place, in place replacement with through flow decking to match the new dock.
Okay.
You have that one up more for me, Liverman, at the end. Who gave you new engineered plans with better specifications to it. Board should be aware when they're replacing that filled dock at Liverman, it's a little different. It's probably going to be IP decking over top of two-by-sixes. The original stuff was all four-by-12, decking over top of 12-by-12s. So it's a little different, but it'll all be untreated lumber and you have good plans for Liverman.
But the dimensions will all be matching up.
Exactly the same. Has planting plans along with your engineered plans, so you should be all set with that.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Yes, final stamp plans are here. All right, trustee.
Okay, next is 44 Cobb Isle.
Keith Cesarit from Claim Associates. Good of you. So the project that we're looking to get permitted is to replace 171 feet of bulkhead at 44 Cobb Isle Road with a 12-foot return on either side of the property. The bulkhead will be an in-place replacement, 18 inches higher than existing, and the area landward of the bulkhead will be planted with a 10-foot wide, non-turf buffer with a gap to access the existing floating dock. We don't have any permits currently in place for the work, but we have had conversations with the DEC. It don't seem that there have been any objections and there should be a permit coming soon from them.
Yeah, I took a look at it. I recommended that it basically mimic the neighboring properties.
The 38?
Yeah, the 38. And just to put on record for all other people applying, every one of the returns in my, my area is going to have a high tide bush, high tide bushes on the returns to hold the soils from going back into the bay when it goes around the return. I believe on the property line, on the, on the east end of that bulkhead, your property line is farther, farther to the east than the return actually is. If you want to put some high tide bushes on that side, if it looks like the property, you know, you have enough room, I'd be happy to see that because the more you can stabilize where the return ends, the better.
Okay.
Well, I also noted that, you know, and it's unfortunate because it kind of is counterintuitive. The 38 piece of property was row cropped of native species. I, I looked at, at your, your, the house, whoever's the architectural landscaper of the house has a very good idea of how to plant native species. I would prefer not to see a row crop. I'm fine with the way it is on the permit, but interplanting native species actually is more beneficial than a row crop.
Okay.
Throw some Montauk daisies in so we can remember they were in the Hamptons and up Florida. Other than that, the plan looks good.
Is this two separate pieces of property?
No. Well, 38 was...
It's across the road.
It's across the road.
Okay, I'm looking at the...
And, and they asked for the 18 inches, which is what the 38 Cobb had.
Okay.
And for all intents and purposes, it gets us up to close to the grade of the road, so we're, we have filtration. Otherwise, the road's going to run off right into the...
Right into the, yeah. No, I was just looking at this because they had two different captions here pointing to the same piece of property, were different. Still good?
Yeah.
So you're going to cut down on sheet runoff? Cutting down on sheet runoff on...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if I bump the grade down, then we're fighting with road runoff.
Yeah, no, it's going to hold it back on the property.
But yeah, on that, see how, see how the property line on the, on the east end of that return? See how you have a spot to plant some high tide bushes there right where you could possibly have runoff? You know, because your return doesn't go right to the property line.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, stick one or two in there and just hold, hold it.
A root system.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing better than a high tide bush as far as stabilizing the end of a return. And the other thing, too, is it gives a buffer to the other neighbor and, you know, it creates a barrier that can't be cut down unless you want to deal with the DEC.
Yeah, right. Okay. It's not a problem.
Do they need updated plans and cover sheet, just noting this? And the plans that would be stamped?
Good to go?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Dune Road Holdings.
Patrick, what do you?
Just doing you.
This simple, my client wants to install approximately 112 feet of snow fence on there, to, which is the width of the property to, you know, to retain and replenish the dune. To be aligned with the adjacent properties, snow fence.
We have clear rays.
And I think the only thing is nothing shown on there about access to the beach, but there should be an opening in there. And I, we would do it in whatever configuration guidelines the trustees suggest.
Do you have the existing? I haven't, I apologize, I haven't seen the property. Is there, is there a stairway or?
There is a stair, there's a, there's a dune walk, you can actually see it there, which is actually pretty well buried in sand.
Okay, but this is, so this is below the stairway?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Trustee Walker, I've requested that you updated survey showing the toe of the dune which you provided.
Yeah, stamped.
And then the regulation shows that it can't be more than 10 feet off the toe of the dune which you provides.
Meet the guidelines, James.
Yeah, I'd just say when you, when you do, you know, for your own benefit, is when you make your access through the snow fencing?
Yes.
Make it so you have to crisscross to go through the snow fencing, so that way it's still building dune.
Understood.
All right, you know, don't make it like a rail, a runway because then you're kind of defeating the purpose of that.
No, I am, I'm on where I have seen it.
Make it so you use a Z through it.
There's an overlap there.
Well, you have the zigzag, right, for the...
Yes. Diamond.
So I don't know if that's on here or not. It looks like it's just straight across on the plan. Is that something you want to change or?
Well, the zigzag is fine, I'm just saying for its access, have it so...
No, it's not on, that's what I'm saying. It's not specific on...
It's a straight line of fence where we would ask for diamonds.
Oh, and double line zigzag, sorry. On the cover sheet.
Do the trustees have that, those guidelines shown anywhere that I could, as far as the zigzag, is there any dimensions or anything to it or is it?
Well, it's 10 feet, right, James?
10, 10-foot diamonds, correct?
10-foot diamonds.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Well, what, I mean, for, for a normal snow fence application in prior, do we have any like guidelines or is it just kind of like make a diamond?
I would have to look, see.
I don't work on specific in a blue book, do you, Joseph?
No, it's just...
Yeah, I'd say 10-foot diamonds and then make it so you can, that the diamonds are overlapping so you can...
Mark, you would call it specific in a blue book?
No, it's just like this.
Okay.
Zigzag.
Yeah, I understand and I've seen miles of it, all right? Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, mimic your neighbor.
Okay.
All right? Thank you very much.
Is it asking that?
Yes.
Yes.
Next is Jeanette Creek Beach and Yacht Association, 42 North Drive Village in North Haven, represented by Costello. Hello.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
I'm Jane Costello from Costello Marine. So I guess it's been a few months since we talked about this project. It was prior to the new trustees being here. So this was, this, it's the same project that we spoke about, I think in November, maybe. Right now, all you should be looking at is the proposal to do the 60-foot offshore jetty reconstruction.
Shelter into chocolate island sound, right?
Yeah, 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 not the inside.
Not the inside of it, yes.
Yep, nope, just as in place.
Separated it, yeah, okay.
I'll come back for that other part, but that's all I'm trying to push through at this time.
I brought my, our attorney down here to show him the lay of the land when we were going to talk about the whole entire project.
Oh, okay.
So here's, we have a little understanding of what's going on there.
Yeah, so they're definitely going to want to revisit that and they were hoping to get the trustees on site.
Yeah, I have some good, I think what we'll do, you know, we'll hold it together for you until we get through the DEC process of the rest of it.
The DEC we got?
No, for the extended return.
We got it.
Yeah, but I don't know if we're going to accept a full extended return, so...
Right, right, oh, to modify, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you could return all the way down to the end of the creek. It's just going to keep doing the same thing, so it's got to be addressed and the board has to, you know, talk about it and we'll talk with you about it. But you can't just keep putting return after return, you know, because that's going to just keep doing the same thing and then we're going to have the mess another five, 10 years down the road. And there's other ways and Costello's is a very talented outfit and I think we can come up with something good.
Yeah, I think one of the, looking at some of my older pictures and stuff like that, when that return was done, you're, the previous return flared out like on the other side, on the west side, it was like long. There's a cluster of rock that are along the shoreline. It actually extended all the way there and then went, for whatever reasons, because everybody who was involved with the project at that time no longer is with us, the return got shortened and then it went with a straight 90-degree and I think that's where the error went. Is because it's too sharp of a...
Yeah, we'll make it, we'll make it work with, you know, there's enough of us to know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But today, I just really wanted to just move on with the 60-foot, that's...
Yeah, you got a time period, yeah.
That, and that's the most important part of it right now. We don't want that to go.
Well, that and you get the whole place getting dredged, the bulkhead on the west side, so everything's going to be fixed up there once and for all.
It'll look nicer for a little bit, right?
We need an emergency dredging permit every year down there.
But we are doing this in afternoon session, the other part of this, or we're going to address it later?
When they bring in the plans before us.
Okay, if Ed and somebody from Costello, you and I go down there and I'll, I'll get my two cents in, you put your two cents in and we'll come up with something decent.
Yeah, Jack will meet you outside, on site, and then I think some people from the association will want to be there, too.
Yeah, okay.
That's no problem.
We do have stamp lines, so we can advance this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
James.
National Golf Links.
Trustee McLaughlin.
So we received the email regarding the agent for this is not, no longer the agent for our National Golf Links, so I'm sure they have a representative here or not.
Anybody representing National Golf Links here?
This is J O.
No, he's not though, he's off.
Okay.
He's off.
Yeah, this is a, a topic that we went back and forth a couple sessions on, that we should have a continued discussion, right, James?
Well, it's got to go on hold, there's no one here representing it.
You recommend holding it?
Yeah, no, because everybody, everybody had different ideas of what was going on there.
We're going to hold that one, okay?
Okay, yep.
Your next one is Peconic Restaurant and Marina, and we do have Glenn Just from JMO representing that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, this one's been going on for a while, it's a maintenance, proposed maintenance dredging of two areas at the, at the marina. The first area is, it's a both irregularly shaped areas they want to dredge. The first one is 100 by 11 to 35-foot area dredged to four feet below mean low water. It would be 81, approximately 81 cubic yards of material removed. The second area is 38 by 59. They like to dredge that to minus four feet, that'll result in about six, approximately 61 cubic yards of material, which would be stockpiled on site, de-watered and then driven up the island to an upland disposal site. It came back dirty, some of the samples.
So you have your DEC permits, you're all square with that?
We do.
This is the last permit you need?
Yes.
And when do you anticipate doing this project?
I beg your pardon?
When do you anticipate doing the project?
I think they, they'd like to do it by spring if possible. I submitted some photos last week of the additional shoreline that's taken place. There's four to five slips that can't be used. And I think a lot of it goes back, a lot of the legacy back is that one dock that they have, their jet ski dock where a portion of it is, is located in your, in your, on the commonality property. And discussions going back and, back and forth, which I was not involved in, going back to, I think Eric Schultz and Bill, Bill Pell obviously was involved in about that one particular area of floats and what we should do with it. And according to some of the memos that I've read, there was supposedly some kind of an agreement back in the day that this was, was an acceptable use.
Is this going to comply by Army Corps for this, Frank?
Yes.
Do you have enough time? Do you have enough time?
Pardon me?
Do you have enough time?
To what?
To get it implemented before it gets, you know, because the Army Corps is pretty.
We have all our permits in hand.
I understand you have permits. Dredging windows, have you, have you checked to see the dredging window for the Army Corps?
I don't have a copy of DEC permit in front of me, I, I have to check it, I want to get back to the office.
Yeah, you might want to check before you commit to saying it's gonna be the spring, see what your Army Corps windows are, because you're cutting it close.
Okay.
It's small cubic yardage, though.
Pardon?
It's, it seems like it's small cubic yardage.
It is, it's not, it's not really that much, it's two, two concentrated areas.
They believe they said, they believe they said they could do it, they don't even need a barge, they can do it from shore.
Correct.
So, the first area's gonna be done on the west side of the marina, and the other one's gonna be done on the east side of the marina. That one there, I, I know we had some questions about the channel being so close to the beach because of, this, it's beyond where the bulkhead is, and there's no, there's no protected shoreline there, and the road is about ten, ten to twelve feet away from it, so, and there's a wetland there, so if you do the dredging too close to it, it's gonna slough in there and.
Yeah, that's why we, I don't know if you recall, we staked it out.
Yes.
At, at the request of the, at the crystal board.
I, I think that the scope and the grade, I think, was addressed, I think the dredging, those aspects were addressed, I think that there's still some confusion about this, this float. That's where I think the problem is, I don't, I don't think it's a dredging, I think there's confusion about the location of the float.
The last time was your, this is the area that you were talking about, was it?
Watch the mic underneath.
Yeah.
There's a mic, microphone.
I see what I got marked if you read where a portion of, what goes over the property on it.
The dredging, I think, is, is okay, I think the problem is that there's a float issue, you recall this, Mark? I mean, I don't, are you aware of some prior, we have any information about some prior agreement, or prior, no?
No, there's no.
No, so, I mean.
It would be a permit, I mean, any float.
We don't have a permit, you know, so jet ski floats, we, we let the marinas move them around without permits, okay, jet ski floats, of the internal parameters of the facility.
Okay.
Not outside, obviously, because that doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
So, the dredging, I think we were, we were good with.
Yeah, I don't think there was any question about that, and it goes back to here, I guess it was Mr. Sean Cambridge, who's the past.
Okay.
Perhaps an attorney, he did attend a set of meetings with Mr. Pell, and someone, someone claimed it was pre-existing non-conforming, and that's what happened.
A float?
Yeah, I know.
That's, that's.
The pre-existing, pre-existing non-conforming needs some kind of.
Just lingo.
Well, people can claim whatever they want to claim.
Yeah, I mean.
That's what I, I, you know, right?
My, I was, my house was pre-existing non-conforming, but it's still there, so I mean, you know, we need, we need, if you, if you can substantiate that.
No, we, we did some research.
I claim I'm six feet tall, pardon?
Nice. Yeah, all right, the, the jet ski float's gotta be, you know, you gotta figure out, if you want this project to continue in a timely manner, you gotta talk and.
All right, I'll check on the.
But the dredging thing, I don't think the one, you know, it's like, they, they gotta function, they need, they need to dredge their.
Yeah, but you, you gotta make sure this is done right, because literally, the road is right here.
I know.
And it's.
And that's where that drainpipe is, too, I feel like.
And so the drainpipe, yeah, I mean, if it's done too steep and too close to the wetlands, it's just gonna fall right into the bed.
I think the drainpipe has a lot to do with that, too, you know, because it's, it's direct, directly going right into the creek.
Yeah, well, you, you have the state permits, right, and they have the slope and the grade.
That would be on page two of that.
Yeah, I'm just listing there, so, so basically what you're saying is if they deviate from the approved plan, it could prove itself to be problematic, so you have to make sure that you're hiring a contractor that's aware of the fact that he needs to, you know, he needs to stay within the parameters of the permits of all the regulatory authorities, or you're gonna have a problem.
We're gonna mute them, we're gonna, there'll be a pre-application on anything on site.
There has to be, and I know you did have stakes, I don't know, are you gonna re-stake it?
If need be.
You need, I think what you're gonna need to do is re-stake it right before the project begins, so that you know you're not going beyond, you know, accidentally, you know, I think it's.
If they, if they go beyond it accidentally, there's no, it's, it's all gonna fall, the road's gonna wash out.
Right.
And you're not gonna fix it other than to, someone put a bulkhead there.
Right, so, no, that's not gonna, that's not gonna happen, so I think it's gotta be staked right at the time you're doing the project before, so that, that can't happen.
All right, we've, that's, that's been, we've done that con.
Well, we have a new board now, three new board members, so, I think it would be something that would be good to have revisited, re-stake it, and then we can, the new board members can take a look at it, too.
Okay.
Well, but the thing is with that, is, I think what, like to Chip's point, is that if you're bumping into dredge windows, and you're cutting it close on the dredge window, you're gonna push them right over it, and then you're gonna have a problem for the facility for this season, so, you know, you wanna make your pitch to these guys, you know what I mean?
I know the DEC, the dredge window in the DEC was, was, was already up, winter flounder, so dredging in these, I, I don't know what it is on your permit.
I don't recall what it was, I have a quick friend.
Does this qualify for, or if you're not hitting?
I mean, we're, we're, we're just dealing with our jurisdiction, it's his responsibility to deal with the other jurisdictions, personally, on the dredging side, I understand, but the marina needs to dredge.
Yes.
I understand that, and, and there's permits that they have to follow, and if they go beyond it, it's gonna be a problem.
But we have to resolve the float first, that's the first line of business.
Well, we have to reserve the float to get the dredging permit?
Yeah, I would like to have it resolved, it's been something, it's been ongoing for about five years down there.
I'll speak to them about it this afternoon.
I'd like to get that done first. All right, so that's my personal opinion.
All right, I could, I'll go back to you this afternoon to let them know, it's gotta be done.
Okay, what are we gonna do, exactly, move it?
I mean.
What's the window, I mean, what's the window for that?
We don't know.
I, I don't have the permit with me, it's in the, it's in the main file back in the office.
When can we get that, then, all?
We'll start with, I could start with that, to make sure we're not spinning our wheels.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I don't know what the, I don't have now currently Councilman Pell here, nor do I have Mr. Cambridge here, so I don't know what.
Yeah, but the marina functioned okay last year, I mean, it's, it's not, you know, it could still function, it's just, you know, we have to wrap it up on, on our end, and I know it was a contentious subject the last time we were, when Trustee Pell was here.
I thought that he just, did you forward photographs relative to the shoring has gotten worse?
Yes.
The photographs are here, these are the, those photographs from.
Oh, there it is, got it right there.
I just want to pipe in, I've been keeping my boat there for scald seasons the last five years, I'm seeing it get worse every year, they're losing boat slips actively, and it's like, they would love to get those slips back.
So what's your thoughts?
Can the, can the issues be broken up, I mean, can?
I, I want, I want the float resolved, I really do, and I'm gonna stick with that, because I, I sat here, we fought over it, fought over it, and I thought it was something that was coming to a resolution.
You got pictures of this float, Jane?
Uh, I don't know, I do it not. I guess that's the gas dock, yeah.
I also wonder, can the, the eastern side dredging be paused to kind of put a priority on this, is this the sort of thing that could get, rather than having to deal with the?
I don't think that's the case, I think it's about, it's, it's the fact that, you know, there's a, like a nexus between cleaning up the whole issue and, and the granting of the permit or something, is there?
We've been dealing with for six or seven years on this board, so let's clean it up once and for all, and then we'll give them a dredging permit to do what they have to do.
Whatever I can do.
Can you get us a date, but, you can get back, probably one o'clock, and, we have a meeting at one o'clock, and then we get this resolved by then, in terms of the dates you have, you window?
Yeah.
By one o'clock today?
I could be back to.
He's saying, he's saying by one o'clock today, can you get it, you know, your client and, and get a resolution for moving the float over, and, you know, onto the marina's parameters, by one o'clock today, is that what you're saying?
Well, also to the same point, I, I had a pre-existing bulk, dock in front of my house, pre-existing non-conforming, and, and Ed and John at the time gave me a heads-up and says, you know, this thing's not, you know, was never on any town record, and I gotta take it from the DEC, and here you are gonna have the DEC coming down here to inspect the site, you know, I mean, you're kind of opening yourself up to a problem.
Well, they, I mean, they've already finished their review, they inspected the site and issued the approval, but I, I understand where you're coming from with this dock, and it's been a sore, it's been a sore issue for quite a while.
Well, well before I got involved in the problem. So, we understand the need and what you gotta do, it's just that we need to get this resolved, I mean, he's asking, I think you were asking if you could get this resolved by one o'clock, did I?
Well, I mean, I mean, at least the date, the permit, we have, we have an idea when the, when the permit expires.
The dredging, right.
Yeah, good. So, that's my point, if we can move dock, that's great, too.
So you can temporarily move it, or just?
No, I think the resolution needs to be a resolution, I think that if it's over the border, right, and it's on an area that is infringing upon, you know, other property owners, whether it's the trustees or somebody else's.
It's over the extended property line.
It's gotta, it's gotta move, right?
Okay.
So jet ski floats don't require permits by the trustees for marinas when they are located or relocated internal of the parameters of the permitted facility, correct? Not outside of it, because that's, you know.
I understand where you're coming.
Yeah, so I mean, but how, you know, with your familiarity of the project, how difficult is the ask?
Personally, I don't think it would be that difficult.
So do you, you know, to his question.
I'll head back to Quogue and, you know, fire up the computer and contact the owners and check on those bird windows or fish windows, whatever.
Well, and.
I think it's winter flounder.
But aside from that, it's, it's the resolution of the float.
Mm-hmm, that's what I have to discuss with the property owners, I've just gotta go.
Hold it over to the next meeting, which would be the first of March, right?
Yes.
Get it all resolved, and then, you know.
It's gonna take a little, that's, you know, it's not gonna be resolvable.
No, it's beyond that, I think. It's the first week of March.
First week of March, but the first of March, I think is.
No, the first week of March.
That's a different set of meetings we got, that's a different set of meetings.
Jessica, when is the meeting, the first meeting in March?
Fourth, it's the fourth.
March fourth.
Yeah, it's the first of March, yeah. The first of March, I think is, is a Friday, we have a different meeting that day.
Okay.
I'm good for holding it over, get the, our questions answered, and then we can move on.
March fourth, okay, you got March fourth, you gotta get all these questions answered.
Okay.
And, and that, and that jet ski float.
Off the extended property.
Moved to a blue book compliant.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
That's what it sounds like.
And it won't, excuse me if I'm, I sound ignorant, but it will require an approval, I mean, it's something in writing where it's gonna relocate to, because it's inside the parameters of.
Well, if it's, if it's a jet ski float, we don't, we, if, if it's a jet ski float, or is it a regular floating dock, what are we talking about?
They have it, they have it down as a jet ski dock.
But is it, what is it?
No, I haven't seen it.
If it's a regular floating dock, then yes, you need to.
Is it here?
Listed on a permit, and you need to bring it in, if it's a jet ski float.
Do they have pictures of it?
Right?
No, I, I.
We, we, we resolve the fact that to work best with the commercial marina operators, that if they were better making decisions on what the, the most effective use of their internal space was gonna be, that it was okay, that they moved, as long as it stayed internal of their permitted facility.
There are no pictures of the.
No, I don't, I don't believe there was any submitted originally, Scott.
No, there are no pictures of it.
Okay, so, can you resolve that all, get this all resolved by March fourth?
Okay.
Okay, so I did leave a message for you on the weekend, right?
Over the weekend?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't, I was away, so.
Okay, all right, so we'll continue the conversation, but now you, you kind of know where we're at here.
Hopefully we've put this, yes, put this in behind all this.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
In the water, water mill town.
This is a highway department project?
Yeah.
Bernadette, Bernadette's Creek.
Important project.
Keith Misery from McLean Associates, we had, this project was on the board's agenda months ago, we've since received the DEC permit at Department of State and Army Corps, and we've also sent in the signed up engineered plans to the trustees as well. So the purpose of this project is to replace an existing failing culvert beneath the road, stabilize the east and west sides of the road, the west side will be stabilized with stone, and the east side will be stabilized with a bulkhead to replace an existing failing timber bulkhead, and there's an eroded area along the east side of the road that will get a new permeable pavement, and a new guide rail on both sides of the road as well, because right now it's in a hazardous condition. And, so, yeah, all, all permits are in place, signed plans have been sent over to the trustees.
No, it's a good project.
Yeah.
It's just you gotta chug forward.
This is important.
Yeah, it's important, I think we got it on for resolution actually one o'clock, too, right?
As far as that guide rail, I mean, that's funny you said that, I just got calls about, because notoriously, the people that lived on Cobb Road and Flying Point took care of that, and they were like, can I go down there and fix that, I don't want to get in trouble, you know, so, I mean.
Very rough shape, yeah.
Like, all, all, you know, notoriously, but the problem is, is the last, the last Christmas tree on Flying Point was Jeff Jones, so, there's only one, one local left on Cobb Road after we left, so I, I will say that, you know, that if you can do it as light high as you, you can, it's kind of like a historic, you know, people drive down that road, and it just brings them back to when they were kids, and they saw people fishing and, you know, next to that lake, so, try and just keep it as close to down match or outhold as you can.
Are you also gonna take out where this, the out, the sand, it's basically, are you just gonna replace the culvert?
Just replace the culvert, that side of the road, though, that's the east side, that will get a, a new bulkhead.
Okay.
A new vinyl bulkhead, it's about thirty feet long, and other than that, the, the rest of the bulkhead is also failed, there's bulkhead that extends beyond that, but.
No, I know.
It's really not functioning.
Is there anything in the permit about, like, making sure the culvert is at level, you know, through the construction, are you able to remove, move any of the material to make sure that the culvert's not gonna sand over, or, or muck up?
That's, that, this is my, that was my question here, because there's a lot of material, if you replace the culvert, and it's a little bit lower, it's just gonna lower, it's just gonna sand up and it's not gonna be.
I think the inverts are the same, so we shouldn't have an issue with that. Plus, it's also twice the size of the, the existing one that's there.
Yeah, but we're still talking about the water level of a bay and keeping, you know, you can, you could go, you know, we gotta make sure that what is in front of the culvert in the both water columns is consistent with allowing water to go in and out.
Yeah, the elevation's very specific for this culvert.
Are we your last permit stop?
Yeah.
You got everybody else?
We have everybody else. Yeah, so we did keep in mind the inverts of the culvert, the fact that fish would have to potentially migrate through this.
Which they do.
From one side of the road to the other.
There's no potential they do.
So, this is very fish friendly, what's being proposed there.
Oh, good, good.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if it's fish friendly, it's water friendly.
Yeah, definitely.
Actually, move it on.
And that group of people that used to stuff all the stones and then get rid of it.
So, there will be something to monitor the flow on the west side of the road, but there'll be an anti-tampering device, so that the town or whoever would want to consider adjusting the flows could do that.
Oh, good.
But that will be locked, so that whoever was plugging it won't really be able to do that anymore.
So, you're, you're dealing with the same.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Trustee Parsons has a few on today. First one's a Cosgrove Family LLC, Five Castle View Court in West Hampton. It's a shoreline bulkhead project. Yes. Somebody here for now? Is anybody representing that?
She, she was here, wasn't she? Kristen was here, wasn't she?
Yes, she was. I thought, I thought I seen her before.
She was here for the village in North Haven. Maybe, yeah, if you can go look, or maybe just skip this round and see if she comes back.
Okay.
That was Costello.
I didn't see her.
That was Costello.
Oh, that was Costello.
That was Costello, yeah. I didn't, I didn't see anybody from shoreline bulkhead in here. So, does this one need to be held, or is this straightforward, or what do you got?
It's really straightforward. It doesn't seem like they're doing anything to the pilings or the bulkhead itself. They're just, they're just changing the decking over the top and they are replacing as a, a kind of a small scale wooden boat ramp next to it.
Yeah.
In your folder.
On here. Yeah. Yeah, I went down there two weeks ago.
You got stamp plans?
We do.
I see that.
These are the photos. This is the wooden boat ramp they wanna replace with tropical hardwood, non-treated. As far as it says in the permit, they're not changing the pilings, they're not changing the.
They wanna replace the ramp or they're just a bulkhead?
They wanna do the ramp and they wanna do the decking over the top, because the decking over the top is starting to fail.
Not the bulkhead.
Not the bulkhead. They also have a floating dock that they want to anchor out into the creek.
What's the condition of that bulkhead, when you were there?
Bulkhead seems okay. It's, you know, it's old school wood treated, but it's, it's not collapsing.
It, it, it looks like, are these voids here?
Yeah, it's the whole, right along the.
Intertidal.
The whaler, whaler is shot.
The intertidal looks like it's, you see that?
Yeah.
So, when they get into this project, is it gonna turn into something else?
Yeah, that's usually the problem.
Yeah. Look, it looks like there's voids there.
No, it's not that bad. But no, the top end of it, it's pretty hurt.
At the intertidal spot, it looks like it's, go back to the other picture.
Yeah, but this is at the head border of this, of the creek there, Casa Pasa, right? And it's not much.
I mean, the upper whaler looks solid.
Yeah, but it's, it's the.
Lower whaler. I can't tell if that's a muck line.
Can you zoom in on that at all, or?
Up, one up.
One up.
Zoom in at that, right there, the lower, right up there.
The lower whaler.
Yeah.
There you go. Maybe it's, is it just.
Actually, I got some photos in here.
Maybe it's just, uh.
Scott, it's not that bad.
It's not that bad. It looks like, it looks like voids in the picture.
Yeah.
I think it's just the way it was built.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as it's not voids and it looks like maybe.
So, they just wanna replace the deck?
They just wanna go over the top.
Then that should be fine.
Here's another picture from mine. That's, the problem is it's so dark you can barely see it.
But nothing stood out at you when you looked at it?
Nothing stood out to me as far as structural integrity on it.
Okay, so then it sounds, it sounds straightforward, yeah. Straightforward. You got stamp plans, so I think you could advance if you got stamp plans.
Yeah.
You good, Joseph?
Yeah, good.
This is Latroy's.
The next one is Latroy's. The home is here.
That was.
Mr. and Mrs.?
Oh, sorry, no, that, that's Cosgrove. That's shoreline bulkhead.
Correct.
Okay, so this is an interesting one. This is the forty-two Dun Road. This is Mr. Donald Machler.
How are you?
Good to see you again.
Hello.
Matt has been terrific, coming out with his site visitations.
Thank you. It's a very, it's a unique location. It's a unique challenge. He, if you can bring up.
Yes, I can see.
Actually, James, can we bring up a, a kind of satellite view of the whole area? So, on a west wind or a north, any sort of strong wind with a west component, he's got about three to four miles of fetch. And so, what's happened over these last several months is there's been several events where the water is overtopping his bulkhead. It's coming up onto the property and it's actually going into the first floor of the house. And the first floor of the house is finished and there has been damages as a result. And so, the plan as it is in the application is to.
Elevate the house?
Yeah.
Well, the, the, the plan as, and we're dealing with here, is to elevate the bulkhead eighteen inches and backfill behind it. But there is concern, we've had conversations about this, that that won't really solve the problem. It would just spend a whole bunch of money. There's been concern about the possibility of reverberation of the wave energy back and it might have detrimental effects on the marsh, which is to the north. But we've been.
Is that an unbalked property?
Next to it.
Next to it, yes. They recently renovated and they recently built that house and what they did is, there's a very nice natural buffer, but they kinda drew a line in the sand right at the, kinda, a couple feet in front of the house, yeah, and they put a lot of material there to raise the elevation of the, you know, the property up closer to the house. So, on these really high tide events, the water is coming up to that line and stopping, but it's also then, because it's water, it just goes right into Donald's property and house.
So, in other words, if you, you could put the bulkhead as high as you want, is it still gonna go around it?
I think it will.
So.
That's not gonna work.
Yeah, so, you, you.
So.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, here's a, here's a nice wetlands behind the bulkhead. There's seventy-five feet of, you know, wetlands, which is, you know, grasses and.
It's beautiful back there.
Problem is the house is too low.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can't fill that in. I mean, that's, I mean, that's getting into the conservation board or the building.
Yeah, I'd love to say that putting your bulkhead higher would do something, but you're not gonna stop water volume.
Now, just to, you know, try to come up with a solution here, can he build up some sort of berm around the house itself? Is that something that, he's in.
That would be town.
But he's in West End Village.
But that's what the neighbor did. He's bumping out of our jurisdiction.
His neighbor built up his property, seaward of the house to displace the water on his property to you. So, is he gonna do it and then the next neighbor gonna get?
Well, he's actually in the middle of a valley. The neighbor to the east is also higher.
Has a tennis court, right?
Mm-hmm.
In the bank?
Yeah. We'd love to help him.
Did you, did you, you consult with any engineering companies, or what, what do you have?
Yes.
Where are they? What's, what are they saying?
We, we've been through this process and over the past three or four years. And it, it, it seems as though that, and, and I've accepted the fact that raising the bulkhead is, is, is not going to solve the problem. I think that ninety-five percent of the time the water comes around the western return. So, and, and if we have the ability to sort of just keep that and extend it on the western side of the property up a bit, that would prevent a general high tide from running around the western end, which has maybe a ten-foot, I guess you'd call it extension.
Return.
Return. If we can extend it, that would probably solve ninety-five percent. I'm not looking to solve a hundred percent of the issue. I'm just trying to figure out a way for that return there to, to go up. And, and, and that, to me, seems, you know, the, the bulkhead, whether or not we actually replace it, it's functioning, so on and so forth. I think that it needs, that return needs to go up. You could see the way the water runs behind it. And then, when there's that fetch and you get that wind blowing across the west side of the bay, it, it kinda hits the bulkhead and the wind pushes the wave action over the bulkhead. And originally, the thought process was to, if you raised it and you were able to, to deflect the waves so that they weren't splashing up, that they would kinda just splash back into the bay. But I think that the return, and in the event that we choose to replace the bulkhead, keeping everything the same, I think solves ninety-five percent of my issues. I don't think that I'm gonna be able to ever solve a hundred percent of it. The hundred percent of it is going to be the two previous storms that we had where, you know, the, the bay literally just goes right off of the bulkhead and, you know.
Yeah, I wanna save your money. I wanna save your money here. And just like, like, Ed and I have worked the water for quite a long time. We are into a new realm of, of, of the wave weather patterns, especially with El Nino, you know, these southern systems. This is a new phenomenon. Trees are snapping over up north because they've been so used to fighting a northwest and a northeast wind, that they're snapping over, because we're not used to these southern systems. So, you could possibly, probably make that return at that house, at that height all the way to the house and you're still gonna flood.
I think that.
And that water's not gonna be able to go anywhere.
Then, then you're gonna have the biggest problem, because if you, you're basically gonna create a dike and seal it off. And then you're gonna have these extreme high tides. The water's gonna flood your property. The bay's gonna relinquish its elevation back down and you're gonna have a pool in your backyard.
I'd really say, like, this is, you have a stabilized shore in front of this bulkhead. You're blessed, because usually when you have a bulkhead, you have no beach. I would say save your money and, you know, look for outside funding to raise your house. I mean, I.
I, that, that can't raise the house. That's, that's out of the question.
Well, what?
It's not a slab. It's, it's not a, a house that, I mean, that's.
I think, I still think that the best option at this point is, is filling in directly on the footprint of the house, or like around the footprint of the house to try to, you know, create some sort of wall.
That's not our.
Right.
But that's what the neighbor did.
Right.
And he displaced his problem to your problem.
Right.
And as long as the neighbor to the east doesn't have that low-lying frontal property, it would work out. Because when the tide recedes, it would just go back into the bay.
It seems like this problem is, is up outside of our jurisdiction, is what it appears to me to be.
I want you to save the money with that bulkhead. It's, whatever, you're, you're gonna, like Ed said, you're gonna create more of an issue than you are gonna help yourself.
And he's in the village, so he wouldn't deal with Maury Shay.
No, he would deal with the village.
Did you speak to the village at all about this?
No.
About the situation with, was it permitted? Was all that fill that was brought in at the neighbor, was it permitted?
I suspect so. I, I have to believe so.
Check. Well, because if it wasn't and he's causing you harm, then that's an issue with, take up with your neighbor.
Yeah. No, I, I, I'm going to assume with a high degree of certainty that, you know, what they did was proper. We did bring up with the village that it seemed as though that the height of the house and the village did come back and say, well, they brought in Phil. So, you know, as soon as they sort of.
You might wanna double check it.
Okay.
Conversation with. You can't speak from there, ma'am. Are you, are you with this gentleman?
I am.
You can come up.
You can come up then. Now, you can't speak from there if you wanna speak. You have to come up here. If you have something to say, you're welcome to.
Yeah, but looking from an environmental standpoint, right now, you have a nice flourishing wetlands between the bulkhead and your house. And that's, that's our mission, to keep that property flourishing. Changing the dynamics, the height of the bulkhead or the returns is gonna change that whole dynamics and then it's, you know, the grasses will die. And raising the height of the bulkhead, you're, on these extreme storm events, especially with north and northwesterly winds, you're gonna get wave reverberation. It's gonna bounce off and that wetland sits to the northeast of you with the nice grasses on it will just, just get eaten away. And that's, that's a, that's a real negative, you know, issue with raising the bulkheads.
You spoke to engineering, you said you can't raise this house?
No. I mean, I will sell before I raise this house.
Just saying, because the problem is, obviously, you know.
Seal will rise and it's all warming.
The house, it's only gonna get worse.
It's not so much, like, the, these, okay, case in point, Sandy, okay, was the last time we had an event like this. We had two successes, successive storms in less than two weeks that were the same power as Sandy. This is not gonna stop.
And a big high tide last December, that was bad too. So, you're, we're in a trend that's bad. That's the, that's the reality. The trend is bad.
Even today's high tide up there with the lunar alignments is excessively high tide.
Absolutely.
So, if we had it coupled with a storm on top of, it would've been much higher than the two previous storms you just lived through it there.
So, we can't act on this today. There's nothing that we can act on.
The, the, if, again, I, I, the return on the west side, if that went up.
You have thirty feet, I think you said, from the DC, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And I'm not looking to, again, to prevent in the event of an event, you know, but it's really, even last night, when the tide was high, the water just rolls around and no matter what I put there, it just erodes out. And this is a recent event over the past, you know, couple of years.
That's the problem with returns.
Yeah, so if, 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 if you bring it up a little bit, then, you know, ninety-five percent of the time, it's fine. And then, in the event of an event, and it's a big event, then the water still has the ability to run around it, to go back out to the bay. I'm not looking to, you know, capture.
So, but the question.
Is there any for a time lapse video of this property, maybe go back ten years or fifteen years?
But, but, hold on a second though. But the question is, from this board's standpoint on the permitting, is what is the effect on the adjoining property from what you're requesting?
Uh, no effect. I, I, I don't think there's any effect, because they've built up, I mean, I could show you pictures on my phone where.
Where is that picture from?
This is twenty-ten. And this is twenty-twenty-two. So, you lost a lot of vegetation there.
Yeah.
Might be one of your problems.
Well, the, what, it kills everything. And I showed Matt when he was there, the seawater coming in, there was a lot of vegetation there. And, 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 one, it washes it all out, because I did, I did re-vedge the entire area, literally two weeks, two weeks after spending twenty-some odd thousand dollars re-vegging. Literally, it went out to sea. It went right out the return. It just went, it came in the return and just washed everything right out. And I showed Matt yesterday that there were trees that were in the back that had to be ten, fifteen-year-old, like pygmy pines and some bay berries and stuff like that, that just over the past couple of years died because of the saltwater.
Do you have intentions of re-vegging? Again?
Well, the, the problem with the re-vegging is that it just doesn't stay.
No, but that's.
So, if I had the, if I had the ability to keep the, so that the water doesn't rush out, it's, coming in is not the problem. The problem is.
What about a rock-filled biolog? What about a stone-filled biolog to, to, to see if you can't hold some of this, to try and get some vegetation?
Yeah, I mean, bulkhead return, all you're gonna do is keep, you're gonna, you're gonna go for return.
That's a return, that the return eats more property.
James said twenty-one up there. It looks fine, and that's only three years ago. So, this is all taking place in the last three years?
Yes.
Well, it changed from twenty-one to twenty-two, so this is twenty-two.
He's saying since they did the project next door.
Yeah, when was the project implemented next door?
Yeah.
Two years.
That's when everything changed on your project.
Because that water's getting pushed somewhere to you.
Yeah, you're, you're getting.
So, if you're pushing water, you're gonna push it someplace else.
You're the new bio soil.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
Yeah.
That's what you became. So, that's where I think, you know, they, you know.
Well, that's why when we do a review on these applications, we take in consideration what your project could possibly do to your neighbor's property.
That's what's happened here.
He, he's not, he's gotta catch up. You know, the neighbors are already impacting him. He's gotta basically catch up to what they've done to the west there.
Yeah, so, the, on the east side, east side is built up with the Tennesse score. The west side is, you know, I could show you pictures of, of the west side where the, there's the, the house there, the pitch from the house to that back area is probably five feet. So, there's like.
This is extremely unfortunate that, that, that somebody from the town or the village did not have the foresight to realize what the neighboring properties are gonna do to you. And I, I, I feel for you. Like, I, I, we would love to work in any manner that we can. Unfortunately, most of your problems are upland.
I think this needs to be a broader conversation.
Yeah, you have to go to the village.
And you gotta do what your neighbor did, honestly.
Yeah, and then you'll have the same, you know, equal.
Grain.
Protection. Right now, you have less protection.
And if you wanna involve some form of a discussion, you know, get, get them involved to try and holistically deal with the issue, but I, you're spanning several jurisdictions here in your resolution, it looks like to me, and you're gonna have to have a conversation with them. Conversation with the village, with the village of West Hampton.
Hundred percent. And make sure that, that, that these freight increases of your neighboring properties, properties were permitted. And then, what we can do on our side to help And then what we can do on our side to help you build this property back up without you wanting to raise the house, we will work with you the best to our ability.
Is this the sort of thing where a rock replacement could be put in front of that bulkhead to?
That's not the problem.
Yeah, it's not, I know.
It's not the problem.
No, I think you need to start at step one. Step one is, you know, there's going to have to be a conversation with the jurisdiction of the village and then go from there and kind of piece it together. Got a new mayor there, right? Mr. Urban? And, you know, he's a very, very excellent person there. And I think that they'll try and work with you to figure something out. And if you need our assistance, obviously, you know where we are. But it needs to be a broader conversation. There you have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good luck. Yeah, good luck. And any questions, you know, bumping at?
Yeah, I will.
Ed's got a lot more knowledge on this area than the rest of us.
But this is, it's.
We're getting them in the right direction.
You're talking about, when you talk about knowledge, you're talking about, you know, the dynamics of how water's going to move and displacing and so on. You know, there's a lot going on here, so you really want to get it right. And it's a bigger conversation. Yeah, it's just a bit exasperated with the house next door. I mean, up until then, it was, I was, it was tolerable. And now the water just runs up and it doesn't run up the way it ran up before. Now it stops and it runs right back into my yard. For their action, there was a reaction and it was detrimental to your property. And now you got to try and figure out how you're going to combat that. And it's up, it's up further, you know, outside of what our jurisdiction is. And it really is a broader conversation. So we're here, you noted, for our part of it, but it needs to include those folks as well. Okay. Okay?
We don't want you to spend a whole bunch of money reading that bulkhead and have the same thing.
I know successes.
But on the subject of money, the gentleman's got a substantial investment in that property on its own. And, you know, you're trying to best protect that and your quality of your life or something that you really enjoy. And I respect that. It's just, we got to do it the right way here, you know, so. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. All right. You have another.
Oh, this is a good one.
Town project, right?
Yeah, Beaver Dam.
Okay.
You got the hot ones today, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Good ones.
This would be great if you can make this one happen.
Pretty fish line, right?
No, not this one.
Chip, no more projects.
When you have a chance, I wouldn't mind a card.
Okay.
Yeah, just to have on file.
Sure. Yeah, no problem. I have them in my bag.
Because there's some upcoming projects that seem to be a forte.
Okay, that sounds good. So this project is on behalf of the town of Southampton. A portion of the project is to rehabilitate the existing building on the site, the Raynor Fish House, which is a historic landmark for the town. And to reconstruct the existing boardwalk, which is in various states of disrepair. The new boardwalk would be ADA compliant with new hand railing. And the portion that extends, like the portion that extends to the north beyond the last return back to the shoreline will just be removed and it's not going to be replaced. So that's about two-hundred-and-sixty square feet. And the remaining four-hundred-and-seventy square feet, that kind of horseshoes around the building, that will be replaced in kind. It will extend a little bit further onto the shore to get to a point where it would at least be above like the high tide line. Because right now, there's points where you pretty much have to walk through water in order to get to the boardwalk. So this will be elevated a little bit.
So this section, to clarify, this section here is going to be removed completely. This is where they're.
And will not be replaced.
Correct. And then just this section will be replaced.
The darker, yeah.
Correct.
Exactly.
And the decking material?
I believe that's E Bay. Yeah. The decking is E Bay. Hand railing is also E Bay, so all untreated hardwoods.
Doesn't need to be thought through.
Well, do you have submerged aquatic vegetation there? If you don't, if it's not a big problem there, then it could be. It could be, we've used.
Recently, we also use black locusts for the piles, which might be considered instead of the green hardwood.
Yeah, let's not continue to go all the way to South America to get.
Yeah.
It's kind of environmental hypocrisy.
Exactly.
You can go upstate and get it black.
Yeah, white oak, white oak is excellent.
Okay. Yeah, we have one project currently under construction using black locusts. From what I hear, it's coming out pretty nice.
It doesn't get any better. Usually lasts around ninety years around here.
Yeah, it's perfect. They're not that long, that's the only issue. But these piles.
They're not that, they don't need them that long.
Yeah, they're only seventeen feet here, so that should be plenty.
Right.
Yes, that's, that's the bulk of it.
Can I ask you to just limit the description? Just because it needs to go into a resolution, so we just need to specify exact dimensions and what you're doing.
Okay.
Specifically, dimensions of everything.
Yeah.
You know, I don't need all this filler in the.
Got it.
We'll keep this on file, but.
If you scroll to the, we can give you a summary, but this, on the second page, you'll see something that you could probably use for that.
Can you, can you fit that onto our cover sheet?
Yep.
That would be helpful. Right there, that box, instead of the C attached project description.
Oh, I see.
Can you fit it there? The stuff that we need about the, you know, the non-treated, book compliant, what the dimensions are, you know, the key points is what we need.
Gotcha.
We need the key points. Right, James?
Yes, please.
That makes sense for everybody. And then we could have all the other backstory in there in files, but.
I know, but it fits the property. It's a shame to take that beautiful.
Well, I believe that the fish house is going to remain. They're just going to reinforce it.
I know, but you can't have like an old fish house and a new dock.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know. But the dock, I mean, I think my kid's grabbing and snapper fish is over there and it's.
There's a lot of crabs there.
There's a lot of crabs there.
Good spot for it.
Yeah, it's, the dock itself is, you know, it's good for people below a hundred pounds.
Looks like.
At low tide.
Yeah, it'd be great to make this into something that is like way more usable and user-friendly.
Definitely.
It could be, it has a lot of potential.
We good?
Hundred percent.
That's the only issue we needed, right? We just have to boil it down into the.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, no problem.
And we have stamp plans, so it's.
Just like Billy Joel, we got to cut your song down to three oh five. It's too long for the radio.
I don't know. Yeah, I think so, because it's three beats.
You want to advance this pending the application cover sheet?
I would advance it.
It has stamp plans?
Yeah, I would advance it, absolutely. Because all he's got to do is make our life easier on the, on the, on the description. That's all. That's easy. Definitely advance it. It's an important project for the town. All right, moving right along. General permit application for determination. These are final stamp plan reviews, which we did receive. I do see JMO is here. He has one for thirty, Peniman Point, right? You don't have to come up. You're welcome to come up, but I think you did everything you had to do with it, right?
No.
You didn't?
It's the same plan we discussed last time I was here, or it's just had them stamped and signed?
I got you. It's good to go. Thank you, Glenn. Then we have Ed Consultants, twenty-nine Shinnick Cock Road. I believe we have their stamp plans as well for their project.
Move that ahead?
Yeah, that can go.
Good.
Yeah. Robert Cavallino, twenty Corwin Lane, and that's a first coastal.
Good.
Good. Yep, that's good. And Joseph, you have.
Probably, is it Nelson for growth?
Yep. I think we got to go to exec, right?
That's Mike?
Yeah. You have to adjourn. That's what's on there. Your list here, buddy.
Sounds good.
We good?
Good.
Good. Thank you.
Trustee Warner.
They drive Southampton Town, Hampton Bays, Plain Associates.
Yep. All right. So we have a twenty-four-page agenda for the afternoon session. And we do have an exec session to get through to have some conversations. If anybody, does anybody have anything that's pressing for the work session? If we can talk about it now, that's got to be discussed in work session. If not.
It's up to you now.
Oh.
We have a, we were talking about the beach events, but that's, you know, that's something we want to talk about.
That's a work in progress.
Very much a work in progress.
Yeah, that's a major work in progress. It's not going to get resolved today, obviously. No.
Well, Matt and I had a discussion.
You can't speak from there. You got to come over here. You know the rules.
I'm sorry.
You're going to get your notice of violation.
So I brought Matt up to speed on what we, what our beach event application is. And I explained to Matt, it is, like you said, a work in progress. There's a lot of entities that go into our beach events. And right now, what triggers a beach event is fifty people or more, and the caterers have learned to get around that. So I said to Matt, take this summer, go to the beaches and see what's going on. And at the end of the summer, he and I will sit down and go, okay, this is what needs to be fixed. Personally, I believe, because of the plovers and everything, it shouldn't be fifty people. It should be how much equipment are you dragging down onto our beach? That's my, and I did that for thirty-five years. I catered on the beach. So I understand this and I just said to Matt, I think best what we should do is evaluate the summer and see where we can fix those projects.
I think you just did a summertime of evaluation in five minutes, quite frankly, is what it sounded like to me. I think you.
Go to these parties. Excuse me? I want to go to these parties.
No, we're not paying, the taxpayers are not paying you to go to the beach and party.
I'm just saying, all you have to do on any given night in the summer is take a walk.
I think that the last history of the board over the last period of time and test, you know, testimony, whatever, but commentary from someone like yourself who's done catering and has seen the problem, I think that we can make some adjustments and resolve the issue prior to the summer. It's not that tough. And you can continue to revise it beyond that. Just based on what you just said, we know where the loopholes are and where we're getting in trouble. And it's counterintuitive to what we're trying to do in managing certain programs like threatened and endangered species, you know. And to your point, yes, what are you dragging down here? So I think this could be a several-part plan. Whereas we resolve the low-hanging fruit issues that we know are a problem immediately. And then we evaluate if there are further revisions that need to be done. That would be my suggestion, based on just this five-minute conversation.
As Matt said, maybe instead of giving, the caterers come to us, it's a commercial permit, and maybe you need to get that for the season. And then.
Well, I was actually even thinking more, like have the caterers get the permit for the season, but also have the person throwing the party continue to have to pay, you know, a permit fee for any amount of cater, of personnel, as long as there's catering involved. So it's like we would actually get them from two different directions. And you could have it self-reinforcing too, where the person who's applying for the beach event would have to list who their caterer is. And then we can go, oh, does this caterer have the permit? Oh, they don't. Well, we need to get, make sure that they have their permits. They got to come to us to get that permit.
Well, that's a good conversation, but I don't think it has to wait till the end of the summer. I think you can fix these problems before the season. It's just, it's still February. And these are not that hard to fix. And then if there's further revisions that are required based on our observation throughout the season, well, by all means, make those revisions. So, good job. Carry on, you know?
Yeah, and for the fifty, the number fifty, it was just picked out of the sky.
Right, so that's, so now we have knowledge.
Exactly. Because you can, you can have a party of ten on the beach and have a kitchen and tables.
And we all know how these things go, okay? Hey, listen, Chip, stop by. Matt, stop by. Jess, stop by. Before you know it, it's a gigantic thing going on. Okay? And that's what happens. We know this. And we have responsibilities to take care of, so we know where the issues are. Let's fix and resolve the low-hanging fruit that's obvious that needs to be fixed. And then as we go through the season, if we have to make revisions, we'll then further make revisions. But that's my suggestion.
So we're trying to implement the.
I would. Because you already know, we already know over the last decade what's going on. Plus, she's got a lifetime of experience relative to this, for crying out loud. Why would you not utilize that expertise?
So we'll need to do some amending of the blue book.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, is there any other issue prior to, I mean, Chip was talking, you know, about projects. And you know what? He's right. We have a lot of projects. We've got, we've got several boat ramps that have to be done, and that's a lot of moving parts. We have Spion Shore Canal Bulk Hitting Project, which is a massive project, okay? That's ongoing here as well.
Where are we in that as far as permitting and stuff?
Where, we've got, the McLean folks are actually putting together the bid spec to go out. The permits are all done.
Yep.
It's, right now, the bid spec is getting written and it's going to go out. And then it's going to have a few weeks to come back and then we're going to, you know, open up those bids and then we'll have a better reputation there. But we're well on our way. All the permits are in place. There's a chunk of bonds that are sitting there. Hopefully, there's enough money there to cover this because that is a mess. It's got to be fixed. Well on its way. Boat ramps, not to mention Meacock's.
Meacock's, no pond, yeah.
So, yeah, we have a lot going on that have to be addressed and this board works as if we're staff, right? Because we don't have a lot of.
I spoke with the, speaking about the, I spoke with the Big Fresh Pond Group and they would like to come back to us. And since we have three new members, clearly myself, they want to come back to us and talk to us about some issues with the track miles and what we've had. So I told them to come back to us maybe in the April, May, when they're more out here and to speak to us, to the board again, to, because they would like us to have, to assist them in getting any grants, whatever. So again, to come back and talk to us, that's, then that's very promising to keep that going.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Do have a quick update from Council, not Council, Legislative, yeah, Ann Welker. The LY drain is open this morning. The water's flowing. This is on New York Road. So basically, the work will be completed for the, on the top part of it, with the weather allowing. So basically, the LY drain that's in North Sea is up and running terrific as of this morning.
And also, we're also speaking with the village for the, for the culvert in the, on Boise as well.
Yeah, that's a good project.
There's so many, there's so many projects we have going on with limited, limited staff, right? And at some point in time, you got, you know, there's just.
Got to reel it in a little bit.
Yeah, it's too much mustard.
Kind of a little bit, you know, we've got good projects on the docket. We just, we can't take on a lot anymore at the moment, as I say.
You're at, you're at the buffet and your plate is full and you're looking at that slice of prime rib and trying to figure out, how do I get it on here, you know? That I, that I would figure out.
Metabolism is not what it was.
I'd figure that out, though. I'd figure that out. Anyway, if there's nothing more, we have an executive session that we have to go to to have some conversations on some things. So I will present a motion to adjourn and go into exec for the purposes of discussing personnel and confidential legal issues. Seconded by trustee Warner. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Going to exec.